Good evening and welcome to the St. Peter's School Board meeting. It is Monday, December 19th. We're here in the Governor's Room, the Community Center. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And let's say our pledge twice.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a nice full house today and it's great to see everyone. So if anyone in the room or community would like to speak on one of our agenda items, please fill out a comment card in the back. And Sarah will work with you to get that to us. Okay, so we need to adopt the agenda, please.
I move.
We adopt the agenda.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good, thank you. Agenda is adopted. All right, a number of items today. Do we want to do truth and taxation right up?
I don't, I wouldn't.
Yes.
Alright.
What?
Or student spotlight.
Alright. We will move on to the truth and taxation presentation. Thank you, Tim?
Thank you. This is kind of the annual requirement every year to do the truth and taxation. Basically to go over what our levy is, which we'll talk about later on tonight and give anybody that's in the audience a chance to ask questions about it. There's four pages that deal with that in the beginning of the packet. Basically, the first page just outlines what our levy was last year and what our levy was this year. If you remember back in September, we approved the preliminary levy, the levy limitation, which limited to a certain amount that you couldn't go above, and we did the maximum. There was only, typically there's a lot of, not a lot of changes, but some changes between September and December. This year, there was just basically one, which lowered the amount by $40,000 on our OPEB. The state asked us to do it a little bit different this time from what we've been doing in the past. So, basically it dropped the levy increase down to $27,205, which is approximately, it's less than a half a percent. So, that's basically just outlining the numbers there. The second page is kind of historical items on the levies and what they've been in the past for the last 10 years. And you can see this year, you know, under the major changes there in that column there, there was really not a whole lot of things that changed. We talked about it at length back in September, about, you know, some went up, some of the individual components of the levy went up and down because of the decline in the Roman, some went down and some went up and other things. But basically, it stayed really flat this year and there was not, you know, like last year with the referendum, it was a major change and you go back a few years with the bonds or the LTFM, but, and things rolling off. But this year, there was really pretty steady from last year and the previous years. So, the levy that we'll be looking at approving later on tonight is a $7,115,818. Page three is basically just an outline of all the different components of the levy. And like we've discussed, there's probably, you know, 25, 30 different components and each one adjusted a little bit from last year, up or down. And as you can see on the bottom, I guess I'll just try and highlight that. Basically, we have an increase of just about $27,000. So, and then the fourth sheet is the, is basically, we're required also to talk about our adopted budget, and this was our adopted budget at the beginning of the year. So that'll be, we talked about that at length and actually probably January, February, March, we'll get into budgeting a lot more and even a little bit with the audit tonight. But basically, the, what will be asked to approve later on, I don't know if anybody's in the audience to speak about the levy or ask questions, is a $7,115,818. So.
Isn't that $7,114,000?
I had a mistake on there, I apologize, but I see that now too. That's what should have dropped. No, wait, that is right.
That's right.
Oh, that was last year's, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was last year's levy, I got them mixed up there. It's a $7,114,000, thank you Bill, sorry about that, but it's the $43,000, which is $80,000 in the preliminary, or $40,000 left in the preliminary one in column H. Yep, I got them reversed, sorry about that. So, and that's the 28 cents, so. But yeah. But yeah, that, actually what we're going to look at doing is column I there, the 7-1-4-3. It's a $27,000 increase or .38%. So, that's probably the lowest increase since I've been here. You know, you see a lot of the levies in the area were up a few percent, so this one is, you know, actually pretty steady state. So, I don't know if there's any questions, we'll be back to talk more about approving the levy later on in the meeting, but part of the state requirement is we do this at, you know, after a certain date, after 6:00 at night, and we always try and do it at 6:30 or the first thing on the items, so the, if anybody's here and asks questions on that, they don't have to go for the rest of the meeting. So, there's no action at this time.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. We'll work on that. Yep.
There's a side note, sorry.
The consent agenda, a number of items in the agenda. Typically, we will take them all as a single item, but if someone would like to call one out or pull a specific item in the agenda out, Sarah will do that.
Drew, I have a couple of questions.
Please.
More of an explanation, I think. There are two pages, when we went online, there are page 24 and 39 are both about the nurse at North halftime position.
Is there duplication?
So I didn't know.
We have two of them, is it?
Well, the online portion was page 33 and the last one in there, I think. Page 48.
There should be a memo of the agreement.
Yeah. Yeah. That's 30 penny, right? And then 48 is the memo, I guess, okay. So we really don't need both of those things in the consent agenda, right? Then, next question I had was the ELL position. You can expedite it tier two from, you know, the notes there said something about you're going to try and get MSU to do something so they could be, get a sub, short-term sub-call or short-call sub, but can't you expedite it tier two?
John, do you want to speak to that? Questions about the ELL.
I connected with the ELL through email.
Okay.
And the response I got was they're unable to expedite, they have to wait for the background check to go through and then the licensing process. So in order to get that candidate into the classroom, I'm going to go through that short-call sub.
Doesn't the short-call sub have to have a background check?
It's a much quicker process.
Oh, okay.
Any other items? I'll take your motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Very good, thank you. Consent agenda approved. All right, highlight of the night, student spotlight. We saw you walk in, we're gonna, this is great.
Mr. Gronseth, members of the board, tonight I have Colby Nixon with us. Colby is a sixth grader at SPMS and he was the last recipient of SPMS's AAA Award. And the AAA stands for Academics, Activities, and Athletics. And Colby was nominated by his teachers and his strength and conditioning coach, so if you don't mind, I'll just read the nomination and then we'll ask Colby a few questions. So the nomination, nominated by Brock Hanson and his teachers. Colby has shown dedication to the morning strength and agility program through his consistent attendance each week. He is a disciplined member of the program, which is shown through his focus and drive to accomplish his work efficiently in each session. He is a positive leader who is respected by others in attendance.
Wow.
Speaking there about Colby and kind of his dedication to his efforts. So Colby, AAA means academics and activities. Do you mention what activities you're involved in?
Um, I play football, baseball, hockey, and basketball.
So hardly anything.
And then Colby, why do you choose to participate in activities? You can do anything you want with your time, why do you spend it in activities?
Because they're fun and I like being with my friends.
Okay, very good. What is your favorite subject in school?
Fire because I like the teacher and it's my type of thing.
Nice, who is your teacher?
Mrs. Sandborg.
Mrs. Sandborg, very cool. And then what, you know, you've got a lot of time to worry about this, but if it were all to end today and you graduated high school, what would your future plans be?
Something that includes sports.
Something that includes sports. And you've got a fairly sports-minded family, is that accurate? Okay, and would you mind introducing who you've got back here?
That's my dad and then that's, those are my two grandmas, right? And then that's my grandpa and then that's my mom and my two brothers.
Very cool, very cool.
Any questions for Colby?
Yes, Colby, so with all these sports, I'm sure you do a lot of training and it sounds like you've been working with Mr. Hanson doing your strength and agility training in the mornings? So as part of that, and I also know that the middle school has some nice, long hallways around the gym. Do you ever get to run through those hallways as you're training?
No.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yes, we do.
You do?
Take a lap around the gym.
Yep. I always thought that was cool. You get to run in school.
So all these sports, which one, if you had to choose one, which one would it be?
The answer is supposed to be whatever's in season.
Colby, are you a Vikings fan?
Yes. I knew we could be friends.
Did you watch the most recent game this weekend?
Oh, my goodness.
That's the best part. Pretty exciting, pretty exciting.
So when you play for the Vikings, will you make sure that they win a little bit earlier in the game so it doesn't drag out so long? Thank you.
I could probably get you connected, a former student that I worked with that always wanted to be a football player, C.J. Ham.
Cool, there you go.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Yes. Thanks, Colby. Good to meet you.
That's all right.
Tim thought that was for truth and taxation.
I'm not coming back.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Typically, we would have a student council report, but I have a sense that that's, we're a pass on that today.
That's a tough role this year and they must be busy people. I couldn't even tell you, I don't even know who it is.
I don't think I've seen it one time.
Uh-uh. Were they?
Well, so be it.
Make sure they were notified and invited, yeah.
Yep, very busy. Tough weather. All right, action items for tonight, we have four action items that we're going to be getting through.
Very exciting.
We will get through, okay.
It is the Super Bowl finances in December.
Yeah, totally.
So exciting.
Yeah.
Their quarterback is here.
That's right, thank you. So first up, to consider the approval of the 21-22 audit.
I have with me here tonight, Elaine from ABDO Solutions, they've been auditors for, I've been here 10 years and before that, and I think I've worked with Elaine for all those years, so many, he's familiar to many of you. And I'll just let him talk a little bit about the audit and answer questions and whatever.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me. Like Tim said, my name's Elaine with ABDO and we'll be going through the fiscal year 2022 financial statement audit, so we put together a summary presentation to go through kind of the high-level activity for the year and also look at some various trends in some other benchmarks compared to your school district throughout the area and also throughout the state of Minnesota. So, again, it's going to be high-level, it should be in your board packets, but if you have any questions along the way, feel free to ask. And Tim, if you have anything to add, feel free to do so at any time.
One thing too, we did go over it pretty in-depth at the business committee meeting last week, so with the members that were there and added some things, you know, addition to that, but if you have questions.
Yep. So we did go through it in a little bit more detail at that meeting, it'll be a little bit more high-level even from that. I should also preface that we are still working on finalizing the report officially, I don't anticipate any of the numbers to change, but we do still go through our quality control and some other things before the end of the year here, but again, I don't anticipate any of the numbers to change from here going forward. Any questions for me before we start?
No, thank you.
So like I said, we'll go through our audit opinion, what our responsibilities as auditors are versus your responsibility as a school board. We'll look at your operating funds and then again, kind of some key performance indicators on how you benchmark against other school districts. So the first thing that we're required to communicate is what our objective is, is a financial statement audit, and that is to provide an opinion on the financial statements. We provide reasonable assurance that they are free from material misstatements. So really what that means is that we're engaged to make sure that the numbers are free from significant errors. So a lot of times, people will hear of an audit, they think of, we're looking for fraud, we're looking for wrongdoing, that's not the case with financial statement audit. We are engaged to look at the numbers to make sure that they are reasonable. So again, our objective is to provide an opinion on those financial statements, where ultimately, financial statements themselves fall back on the school board through acceptance of the audit report. So with that, we gave a unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, which is what you want, are generally accepted accounting principles. We're also required to look at other areas of legal compliance put out by the state and the federal level. We don't have any findings to report on the single audit report with the two major programs that were audited, which were your ARPA dollars and then your food service activity. And then we also have some other areas of legal compliance at the state level, which we have some instances of non-compliance to report, which we'll go through in the next couple of slides here. So again, you had a clean opinion on your financial statements, you do have the following findings, if you go to page four here in that presentation. So the first three are findings that you've had in the year past, preparation for financial statements, limited segregation of duties in the food service function in year-end accounting and audit adjustments, very common in a district of your size and just some things that are required to, for us to disclose for the assistance that we provide as auditors. Some new thing or new findings this year is bank reconciliation adjustments, a lot of that relates to the new self-insurance fund activity that is going to be ongoing. So Tim is aware of that, we're going to be working with him to get that established and get that adjusted more timely throughout the year, as that was a new, a new function this year for the district. Anything to add on those, Tim?
Yeah, basically on the self-insurance, you know, we started that right at the, you know, beginning of the year and it's a complicated accounting, you know, everything, everything's there, it's just a complicated getting into the right fund. We tried to mirror it after our Dento, which has been self-insurance for a number of years, and because this is a lot larger, we have to do it a little bit different. And so it's just a matter of working through it and getting it done, you know, not starting, we kind of started behind the eight ball a little bit last year and, you know, now we're catching up, so.
And page five, is it the compliance findings that we talked about? The first one's collateral coverage, Tim was aware of that too, at the end of the year, a lot of that has to do with the timing of when the receipts came in and exceeding the amount of the FDIC coverage limits plus the collateral that was pledged. Student activities, we also have some findings to report around that. That's been a point of emphasis with the Department of Education the last few years is to have some additional documentation involved with that in the student activity function and then also excess cash in the food service fund. So as we'll see in the next few slides here, we'll get to that point with the students on the free lunch program this year, with the Fed program, they do limit you to the amount of cash that you can have in the food service fund. They did up that from three months to six months of expenditures in fiscal year '23. Unfortunately, that does not, it was not retroactive to fiscal year '22. So you do have excess cash in the food service fund. So those are the three non-compliance findings that we have. Tim, anything to add on that?
Yeah, on the collateral, we just missed that for a month or so and then we have that one fixed and we have a report to cover that. The student activities, we need to kind of implement a couple of things with the student activity department as far as a couple of forms to get the students more involved in some of the expenditures. And then the excess cash in the food service fund, it's just, as you see in some of the reports there, we spent more money this year, but we didn't, we didn't spend enough. The food service fund is, did very well because of the free and reduced, everybody qualifying for, you know, it wasn't free and reduced, everybody got the free meals this last year. So we served a lot of meals and they all got paid for, so it's an excess cash and we're actually right now still over the six months. And I don't think we're alone in reading other reports and seeing what some of the food service balances did throughout the year, because it's just a function and, you know, we tried to comply as best we could with still being good stewards of the money, not spending that stuff that wasn't needed, so.
Any questions on that? We'll keep going then, so page six here, the prior year findings, as we mentioned, those first three are repeat findings from the year prior. So we'll change gears a little bit and look at some of the numbers, and the first thing that we'll start on slide seven here is your ADM and look at where the trends have been on that. So from fiscal year '18 to '20, you're right around that 22-20 to 22-45, kind of the peak in fiscal year '20, your ADM has dropped a little bit the last few years, that has been pretty common in most public school districts, down to the level of 2041. And as you'll see with some of that changes in the ADM in the next few slides here and the impact on the fund balances. But the first thing that we'll point out here is go through the fiscal year 2022 in a little bit more detail here, so when the final budget was approved, we anticipated about $30.1 million in revenues compared to about $31.9 million in expenditures. So when the final budget was done, we anticipated about $1.5 million decrease in fund balance compared to, down to $7.7 million in total at the end of the year. So, what actually happened is that revenues came in short of that by about $900,000, a lot of that is due to the timing of some federal dollars, but expenditures kind of offset that a little bit by about $820,000. So the biggest change on the expenditures, there's an increase in your regular instruction spending and also an increase in your spending, which you'll see in the next few slides too. But overall, so again, anticipated that $1.5 million decrease, actual fund balances did decrease about $1.6 million, down to about $7.5 million at the end of the year.
Sorry, just like one comment on the revenue, the shortfall of $900,000 is probably entirely, we lost or didn't lose, we came in short on the, some of the COVID money, what's called SRR3 funds, we had budgeted basically about $950,000. They had a lot more requirements on the application for those funds and the budgeting than the prior ones, so we need to adjust a little bit what we're doing, but that money isn't lost, it's rolled ahead into '23 and '24. So if you remember, we always do the rollouts and things like that for the previous, next years, we should be able to have additional $900,000 in '23 and '24 because we did not collect it in '22. So, we actually, if not for that, we would have came in a little bit better than budget, you know, budget was still negative, but that was the main cause of the shortfall in revenue. It's like Elaine said, it's a timing matter more than we didn't receive it.
So if you go to slide nine, you can see the trend in the unassigned fund balance with the, with that decrease in the total fund balance and the general fund. So really what we want to look at is your unassigned, which is dollars that are available for spending in districts discretion outside of those that are externally earmarked for specific purpose through MDE. So, unassigned fund balance at the beginning of the year is $5.2 million, that did drop down to $4.45 million. You can see in that orange line also where the, kind of your target internal unassigned goal is. So, total fund balance fell a little bit short of that due to some of the things that Tim mentioned, but going forward, as you do, go forward with your budgeting and collection of some of those extra dollars, I would anticipate that you'll still see some of those either level off or maybe increase, but Tim could probably go more in detail about that and what the future holds for the district as well. Okay? So next slide, we can also compare you through the data that we received through the Department of Education and again, looking at the trends in the fund balance and how you compare to your peers throughout Region Nine, which is kind of the greater Mankato area, that's going to be the black line in these graphs, and then also the statewide average of school districts is going to be the yellow. So you can see that your general fund balance has typically been right around that 28 to 32% from fiscal years '18 to '21, so right around that three to four months of expenditures, that did drop to 24% to right around that three months worth of expenditures for fiscal year '22 for the, those aforementioned reasons. Next few slides here, I'm not going to go through in a ton of detail, but the one thing to point out in your general fund revenues per ADM, the main driver of your, every dollar that the general fund does collect is going to be through the state of Minnesota, the Department of Education. So your tax levies end up being right about one-tenth of collections where the state resources through the GenNet and the Special Ed functions are going to be your main primary source of revenues. And if we drill down onto the property tax function a little bit more in slide 12 here, you can see on a per ADM basis, you are favorable to other districts in how you operate, your taxes on a per-home basis are a little bit higher, mainly that is just due to the, of the tax base and where some of the allocations are done in that. So, but on a per ADM basis, you are favorable by about $300 per ADM. Same thing with the expenditures, not going to go through in detail on every single thing, just to point out that, you know, conversely to the revenue collection and where the general fund spends or disperses their money, about 65% or about two-thirds of every dollar the general fund does spend, does go into the instructional side rather than the support. So that's going to be your regular, your special ed, and then some of your vocational spending is going to be dedicated to those resources. And then the same with your general funding expenditures by object code, about three-fourths of every dollar general fund does spend is, goes towards the salaries and benefits. Any questions on that?
I'll just probably add one thing on the general fund expenditures, one of the reasons they went up is for, is because of special ed expenditures, doing, and there's a couple different reasons for that. First of all, the change in students out at the Ashville Learning Academy with more special ed students out there, also then embed, there was some increases on expenses there and then are just general increases there. One thing about that money, it's a little confusing in the whole scheme of things, we spend it in '22, we get it back a couple of years later. So some of that shortfall from this year will be picked up later on, you know, not the entire portion of it, that was, that was a chunk of it this year, special ed increases, so.
And if we go to slide 15 here, you'll see that a little bit more graphically as we look at some of the box and whisker plots, so. So again, your school district's going to be the yellow and the statewide average is going to be the, or your school district's going to be orange and the statewide average is going to be the yellow. So you can look at your general fund expenditures on that per ADM basis. You pretty much fluctuated with your peers. That did jump up in 2022, as Tim mentioned, you did have the additional spending, a lot of it related to the sped and the regular instruction. And then also with that decrease in the ADM for the year. And you can see it too in a little bit in the next couple of slides here on the regular instruction. And then also the sped that you are a little bit higher than the statewide average in 2022 for both the regular and the sped instruction. I do like to preface, that doesn't mean it's a bad thing. It's really just means that more of your resources are being dedicated to those, to those areas of the regular and sped instruction.
One thing with the sped too, we probably have a little higher percentage of sped than average also, which increases, you know, obviously, this is based on total ADMs, which is that. So that's a little bit.
Yeah. If you look at that graph on 17, I think that's representative of that, the past few years from 1920 and 21, you are a little bit higher than where your peers have been at. And that did, as Tim mentioned, did jump up in 2022 as well, which the timing of the cash flows and how the revenue recognition works at the state level will be collected in future years.
Lane, I had a quick question.
Yeah, absolutely.
On these comparisons to the state, are these projections of the state average?
So from 1920 and 21 are actual. So we do a data request from the Department of Education. They send us all an Excel form and we can work it based off of the area. And that's how we come up with some of the different metrics. 2022 is projected based off the trend from 2019 to 21. We don't have all the data from the state until they release it, which is usually like June-ish by the time they get all their reports in. So I would anticipate that yellow line in 2021 to, to increase more than the, the trend is right now, just for a variety of factors. The spending of the gear and the extra dollars, inflationary pressures, that sort of thing. So that is a great question. I, I would anticipate that that yellow line to probably increase higher in 2022 than where the trend has been at recently. Any other questions before we move on to food service? So same thing, looking at the food service, looking at your final budget to the actual amounts. So anticipated about $258,000 increase to a little over a million dollars in fund balance when the final budget was done. Increase in fund balance was actually 456,000 to about 1.2 million. As Tim mentioned, with the, the student population available for the free, the free lunch program with the change at the Fed level, that really drove up revenues significantly, which also caused that, that excess cash finding. So revenues were about 2.3 million compared to about 18, 1.8 million dollars in expenditures. So with the additional food served and the revenue collected really was the, the primary driver in that.
One thing, you know, if you divide six months of expenditures, you know, roughly six months of expenditures will be about 900,000. And our fund balance is 1.2, so we're over $300,000 of where we, you know. There may be hopefully some help from our options to help, but options on something to do with the fund balance. But to date, there's, there's nothing right now. It's because it's a federal program, it has to stay in food service and be spent on the food service items. You can't transfer it to the general fund. Maybe it'll be changed at some point, who knows, because we're, we're not alone in this issue, so.
Tim, can you use it to pay off unpaid?
Actually, unpaid balances have to be paid from the general fund.
Into food service.
Because, yeah.
It's food.
I know, the way they look at it, and I'm not saying I agree with this, is that it should have been paid, you know, if it had been paid for, it would be in the fund service balance. So they require it to come in because we're part of the free and reduced federal program. They make the rules.
And you couldn't just, any late delinquent payments could just go into the general fund?
I think if you, once you transfer that over, which we have not done, then you could probably put it back to the general fund. But you, probably when you transfer it, you're not going to collect those funds. Totally separate matter, you know, they've been talking, at some point, I think we'll end up with free lunches in Minnesota for long term. There's some, part of the issue with that, and I know Bill's been working on that with, with a lot of the other superintendents, is that there's so much of other funding from compensatory titles, E rates tied to the free and reduced applications. And what happened is when the lunches were free last year, nobody completed the free, or not as many, I shouldn't say nobody, but the application numbers were down. Kind of a bright spot for next year. This year, we're, last year, we had like 28% of the free and reduced. This year with, with the application, they're up to like 45, so it's going to make a significant difference in the budget. But somewhat what happened with the free and reduced lunches, your food service balances went up at the expense of the general fund. So before they hopefully go to free for everybody in the future, they will figure out a different formula for compensatory and, and all the other items that are tied to that. You know, it's everything to your athletic classifications, it makes a difference on too, so, you know, that and, and items. So that's, that's what they need to work through. Free lunches would, would be great, except it, it did hurt our general fund. And that's the federal rules.
That's a good way to put it, you're kind of liberty of the feds where you can only spend it on a certain amount of things, but you can't have too much in there. So your hands are kind of tied, just like Tim said, maybe hopefully in the future, they'll give you kind of a one-time reprieve and allow you to transfer. But at this time, it's just unknown.
And they set the cost too, don't they?
Yeah, they kind of tell us what we need to charge for meals or the, the minimum because they don't want you to charge too little because you're getting the money in on the free and reduced. And they, and adult meals are set certain price too, so it's. It's a good program though with the free and reduce because it does help a lot of people there, it just causes, you know, they make the rules.
Charlie, do you have a question? Anybody else? We'll keep going, slide 19, same thing, looking at your comparisons in your food service expenditures. Again, I would anticipate the statewide average to increase with the free lunch program in 2022. You can see what the impact was with the additional meals served and the costs on the, on the food service expenditures for fiscal year for the district. Community service funds, it's going to be your other operating fund. Again, anticipated about $272,000 decrease in the community service fund this year. It came in a little bit better than anticipated, 240,000. So expenditures were pretty much right on, within $3,000 of budget. You did have a little bit more collections than anticipated by about $28,000. The, the fund is still operating at a deficit. Typically what happens is that either there's a budget to transfer from the general fund annually to, to subsidize the operation. Or once every three years, they kind of replenish those fund balances, something like that. So that's obviously a decision that's going to have to be made at the, internally or at the district or the board level to how to finance that. But at the end of 2022, there was a $287,000 deficit in the community service fund related to those activities. Same thing with the community service fund again on the comparative to your peers. Nothing really out of the ordinary, there were some increases in the, in the cost from 2020 to 2022. A lot of that is probably just with the decrease in the ADM. And then also, as we mentioned earlier, some of the inflationary pressures and additional costs. One final governmental fund that you have is your debt service fund. So there was a bond refunding in fiscal year 22, which decreased the interest rate on your building bonds from four to five percent, down to 2.4 to 2.7%. So that did basically cut two years off of debt payments for the, for the debt service fund. So those old bonds can't be called until February 1st of '25. So really what happens is that this new bond is going to be sitting in escrow, which is held by a bank to make the bond payment upon the call date. So there is $48 million sitting in an escrow account waiting to be paid. So that's why that graph is a little bit skewed. So once that, once that bond is callable, that bond will be paid off and then the new bond will take over and payments will be start being made on that.
You know, one thing we talked about the business community too, it was a, you know, a very timely decision to refinance that. Any of you that have watched interest rates since early in the year have known what they have done. So it's really looking to be a good decision at this point. The refinance saved a lot of money and it, it couldn't do it now, so.
Okay, you're not going to refinance at 2.5%?
No.
About $8 million, right?
Yeah, the savings at the end.
So the last slide that we have here is to kind of wrap everything up and to look at it all encompassing and, and look at your total cash and investment balances by fund. So as we mentioned, you have that $48 million that is sitting in the debt service fund. So you kind of have to take that out if you're looking at a comparison. So total cash balances outside of that did decrease by about $2 million during the year. A lot of that is related to that general fund, offset a little bit by the increase in the food service cash. And again, some of it is timing of the cash flows from when you get reimbursed for various purposes too. The other big change is that self insurance fund, like Tim mentioned, we did split that out to be more transparent for financial reporting level to have that set aside. So there is about $500,000, a little over $500,000 in the self insurance fund for, basically what that is, is premium stabilization in the future for future rates and for that activity. So with that, that is all we had to go through tonight. So again, wanted to keep it high level. Are there any other questions or Tim, is there anything else that you want to point out?
Um, I guess I just want to thank Lane and Abdu, this year was, we had a lot of moving parts between the refunding and the self insurance and a couple other, you know, changes. You know, the referendum was, you know, during the year two and it was a lot of, it was a lot of different things, atypical. You know, it wasn't an atypical year, it was pretty much an unusual year. And then throwing all the COVID funds, which are just moving and then the food service stuff, it was, they, they.
Unique year.
It was a unique year, yes. It's a good one to have in the books as far as the audit, so.
Yes, very good, thank you, I appreciate it.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the 2122 audit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, um, all those in favor, do you say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed? Very good, motion passes.
Thanks, sir. My contact information is on the last page, if you have anything, if you have to answer it as it comes up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Tim, this is great, all right. So we're, next item here, consider the approval of the certification of school district levy for taxes payable in 2023.
Um, this time I'll get the number right, there's just been a lot of numbers this last couple of weeks, I apologize for that early on. But basically what, you know, happens here is we need to, to certify the levy and then if it gets certified tonight, then we report it to the county and to the state. And then we, we say that we had the truth in taxation meeting and that, that goes through. As we talked a little bit before, remember in September, we had the preliminary levy and that was certified at the maximum. The only change from that is, like I talked before, was a $40,000 drop in the O P E B, the other post employment benefits, which reduced from 350 to 310. Otherwise, every category was the same and that's the first, like I said, the levy was, this is the first time I remember nothing changed from the state between September. Usually they have a calculation off where L T F M changes or something, but this year was pretty straightforward. So, and it's probably the smallest increase I've seen too, at point three, whatever it was. So it's, you know, I guess the accident certified, and we talked about it at length also at the business committee meeting on last week. So that's, I don't have a whole lot more to say on, except it was, it was actually pretty boring this year, so that boring is sometimes good. If you remember last year, we had the referendum and everything, it was kind of up in the air a little bit in between if the referendum, if the referendum passed, so.
Very good. And could you say that amount again, just so we make sure we have the right number?
Yep, no, I. Because there's two different ones in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the, it's the one on the first page there on the truth in taxation, I piled it, 714302328.
The one on the action page is 38. The cents is 38 cents or 28 cents?
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that matters, but I think it matters.
That 10 cents would hang us up somewhere.
Yes. You're, the first page says 28, which I would assume is right.
I apologize for that, yeah.
No, 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 I, I don't know that it's you, Tim.
It was me.
Could be.
All 38, I think it's the 28, I, I mean, if not, I'll under levy it 10 cents, we'll be fine.
So do the 38 just to be safe?
Yeah, and then I'll do the 28 cents, yeah.
All right, I make a motion to approve the certification of the levy for taxes payable in 2023 for the amount of $7,143,023.38.
Very good, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Okay, very good. So all those in favor, we say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, same time? Very good.
Thanks, Tim.
Uh, next up, we're considering a resolution establishing combined polling places.
Yes, this is a requirement that you do every year. There is one change that is included this year and that is a change of polling place for people living outside of the St. Peter's city limits in Niklet County. Will now vote at Johnson Hall. Previously was at M V E D and it was just a little bit difficult to do that during the day in a school. And so we have moved that to Johnson Hall. And that is the, the one change for next year.
And that'll be that way moving forward?
Yeah.
I believe this says the National Guard Armory.
That's for in city. However, Ward Two, since the city changed and eliminated precincts, I think they're all going to come in the same door. That's the way it was for this year's election. That was a change when they redid the boundaries. They didn't go all the way down to precinct level, they just had Ward One and Ward Two. And that's the way they did the polling places, so you might want to check far about that.
So if it just said community center instead of the door?
Well, and I think.
Door A.
Yeah, the city sits those.
I mean technically either door will work, it's one is quicker, potentially.
There's only, are we talking about the armory? Because there's only one door coming in the center. Oh, well, the armor, we've always all just came in the same door and just been real friendly about it. I don't know.
Which table's mine?
So I would prefer to not have to read the entire resolution into the record and just rely on the paper that we have here included within the agenda?
Yes, you could just say resolution as included in the agenda.
Yes, so I will consider a, a motion to move, well, to move the resolution confirming combined polling places for the 24 school year district elections.
And I would move to confirm the resolution as listed in the agenda.
Brilliant. Any further discussion?
Second.
Oh, thank you, all right, very good. Any other discussion? Nothing, Charlie? Okay, so I'll start with my left.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Drew, aye?
Kate, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Very good, resolution passes. Thank you so much. All right, last action item. We have the second reading of revisions to the policy manual. And we are looking at, just looking at the numbers. Well, the policy manual, we'll just leave it at that.
All right, there are two that are being deleted. One called other working conditions that was really a, a collection of things that are covered in other places such as contract or other policies. So it was no longer needed. And then the inclusive education program is included in other policies regarding special education services. And so it was also no longer necessary. And then policy six twenty four about online learning is really about the procedures and the statutes around when a student would like to take online classes, how that works and what the rules are around that. Just want to throw in and mention that we do provide online services through South Central Service Co-op and count as St. Peter courses, so keep that in.
Very good. All right, well, with that, I will consider an approval or a motion to approve, this is the last of the items. Move to approve the second reading of the policies included in the back. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So when, when you go through that policy that talks about services that the district has to provide, if someone is a full time online student at an institution, generally another school district that has gone through all the state stuff to be approved by them, if they're a full time student in that district, do we have any obligations to that student?
Not if they're a full time student there.
Okay, that's what I thought, but as I read through there, I didn't see that just stated that way, so.
They would be, they would be counted as an open enrolled student then into that school. This is if, this more so applies when a student is taking, where am I looking at, supplementary classes online. So they might be taking a class or two, but the majority of their coursework is through us.
And then we, right on the computer.
And the, the way the, the law works and the financing works, that gets paid for first, the online portion, and then we get what's left. And that is the reason students are limited to what they can take. So if they're taking a couple of online courses, they can't then take a full course through us because it only pays for so much.
Yes, very good. Oh, well, we have to call for the actual vote, yes. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign? The motion passes. Very good, thank you. All right, that concludes our action items tonight. We do have some informational items to get to. First off being the first reading of the revisions to the policy manual. Policy four oh nine, five one six, quite a laundry list.
Yes. Uh, policy four oh nine, employee publications, instructional materials, inventions and creations. This is an existing policy, five point eight one. And there were a few little differences and we are adopting the, the new policy. Our current policy paid employees for a portion if the district were to make profit. I can't remember a time any district has ever made profit on something that someone has written. I suppose if we had someone write a curriculum or write a book and then we sold it as a district, that would come into play, but it's not, not a very common practice. Generally speaking, if it's created during work time, it is a district product, so. Policy five sixteen, student medication, medical treatment or procedures. This is a revision to a policy that we have previously adopted. And it is to include the use of Narcan in the middle and high school. So it would be available, we will have staff trained and in the event that situation would call for it, we would be ready to respond. So that is that changed that policy. Policy seven thirteen, concession stands, that is pretty much going through the way it was, except for a change to some of the language to where the profit goes. It was very specific that it would have to go to a specific place in the school related to whatever activity raised those funds. We've changed that to be general fund so that they can use it as needed in those programs. Booster clubs, that is going through as, as written. We do suggest having some conversations. Or wait, is that the one where it's going to general? I'm getting confused. That was going through as written. Was that the one that was, I don't, no?
The booster club was the.
It was the concession stand, yeah. It's because the concession stand is run by the booster club is why I was getting confused.
Yeah.
Crisis management policy, they did have a model policy that was kind of a, kind of a build your own policy, like take your practices and put it into their model policy. We compared it to our current policy and felt that our current policy was more relevant and fit our district better. And so we are keeping the previous policy, but renumbering it to eight oh six. Actually, the eight oh six F, we do not have a crisis management form. So that one should not have been included on the list. And then policy five oh three, unpaid meal charges. There was a change at the state level that said you could no longer provide an alternative meal if the student was unable to pay for it. So we corrected the language to reflect the change in statute.
So they just get a regular meal or no meal?
They get a regular meal.
Okay, I'm just, just clarifying.
Yeah, yeah.
No, all occurred, I guess.
No, all occurred. Standard meal.
On the crisis management policy, I was looking through that and I'm sure it's fairly detailed with information and so forth. But I have a concern. Now, when we hire new people, like we approved the hiring of some people, do they get an orientation with this crisis management stuff that they're expected to, to know?
When we hire people at the beginning of the year, we go through. With our paraprofessionals, they do have some training, but it's not to probably the depth that it should be. However, in our crisis situations, it is generally the teachers who are directing them and so that parents learn as we do our drills.
But I'm concerned about these new teachers that are coming on board, if they're getting any training.
If they do, new teachers that come on board in the beginning of the year?
What about the ones that are coming on board?
The ones that are coming in now.
Now.
Do they complete the online training?
Because I, I noticed somewhere in there I read they talked about bomb threat. And if you got a bomb threat, know what the expected behavior was. I mean, I didn't spell it out, but I'm sure there's, they're taught what they're supposed to do. I could just see someone walking in their first day or a sub, someone hands them a bomb threat, don't. You had total panic or something.
When we do our drills, I mean, a lot of times we do like turn up at the table, pop exercise, you know, respond, like how to respond to that, especially when you do like a lockdown or shelter in place or response drills. That's probably been something that's learning happened because you do have to respond, get information on the fly and decide what you do with your home or to stake or go on with it.
We, we have been working on our onboarding processes though, and that's a, a good note to take into consideration. I know we've, we've upped our game with onboarding paraprofessionals this year, working with MVET and would like to do that for all employees that are starting with us.
Yeah, it's, it's nice to throw the unexpected at them every once in a while because that's usually what happens. Like I tried to get them to pull the fire alarm during a lockdown once. They did it, but they announced they were going to do it.
That's what you call a really bad day, is what you call that.
Yeah, right.
During the lockdown.
It's happened, though.
I know.
There've been some school shootings in which they pulled the fire alarm to get kids coming out and then they shot them when they came out.
Yikers.
Uh, information item number two.
Oh, yeah, I was waiting for a vote.
Oh, yeah. So the Native American Parent Advisory Committee update.
Yeah, I'm super excited to have John Graff and Shar Claw joining us tonight representing the Native American Parent Advisory Committee. I have to say that Shar, serving as chair of the committee, has brought a lot of energy and excitement and new activities and new events. And I'm so pleased that you're here to, to share with us tonight, so thanks for being here. You too, John.
Uh, so as you're aware, school districts in the state of Minnesota with ten or more Native American students are required to have a Native American Parent Advisory Committee. We met that threshold in twenty seventeen. And the team has kind of been evolving since. But as Mr. Grand Seth said, when Shar took over the team, our productivity curve just went. Uh, so Shar's here to talk a lot about some of the things that they've been up to.
Yeah, for, for those who have, who don't know me, my name is Charmaine Claw. I'm, I'm a staff here, I'm a paraprofessional at early childhood. I have three kids here. I'd like to introduce myself in my own language, like always. Yaate, she, Charmaine Claw, yin shi, tsisand, de shi nshlo, ashi bax tien, tansan, he shi, eh, um, in toba, nashna. I got elected in May and I had like so much plans coming from a different school district. I'm actually coming from Shakpe School District, so I had a lot of plans and vision for this school district. And I'm proud to accomplish a lot so far. Our goals and objectives for the two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three Native American Parent Advisory Committee, we have like five area goals that we submitted to the state and they are as follows. Support post secondary preparation for American Indian pupil, that's one. Two is support the academic achievements of American Indian students. And three, make curriculum relevant to the needs, interests and cultural heritage of American Indian people. Area four, provide positive reinforcement, reinforcement of self image of American Indian pupils. Area five, develop intercultural awareness among pupils, parents and staff. These like goals and objectives I just read myself and John combined, like our brains together, submit that to the state of Minnesota. But if you're acting in this school district, our goal as committees to strengthen and promote positive experience among our Native American students. We like to help guide each Native American student to strengthening self identity, culture perseverance, and tackling positive future endeavors. Number two, building meaningful relationships among staff by offering support, guidance and culturally, culturally responsive professional development. Have staff become aware and meet the needs of Native American students through history, tradition and culture. Increase academic success, success and achievement, improve the graduation rate of American Indian students. Increase academics, academic and educational opportunities for Native American students. Five, encourage parent participation to join our parent committee. This just means to me is like to recruit more parents, Native Americans out there. For an example, we started like only with six, six roster members and we're trying to get two more staff to become involved. And then I'd just like to give a shout out to the five additional district representatives that participate in our meetings and give their input of how they can help our group. And then increase communication between home and school. This, our, our community is trying to put in place, like to hire a part time Native American cultural liaison, which we're truly trying to do this year, we're just waiting for funding. Accomplishments we have done so far for this year is in May, we had our first feather graduation ceremony in Casota, which we had one graduate, but it was such a great ceremony we had. For those of you who, that don't know what a feather ceremony is, it's the highest honor of success a Native American senior or child could, could get. The feather ceremony is a tradition that honors Native American graduating seniors for their accomplishments and offers a blessing as they continue to make their journey in life. And in August, we did like a little recruitment drive at the Niklet County Fair and we are hoping to keep continuing on that partnership with them. In September, we did September and December, we held like a cultural education for staff and community members. In October, we did an indigenous walk and that was just a walk that, that started from the middle school to the.
Minnesota Square.
Yep, Minnesota Square Park. It was just a walk that celebrated different walks of life on Indigenous people faith. In November, we did Native American Heritage Month where the cultural trunk was displayed and the cultural trunk provided different pieces of Native Americans, families and students that were represented in St. Peter, which we have, we have Ojibwe, we have Dakotas. The two bands of the Dakotas is the Yankton and I think it was Ho-Chunk and then the Nabo. And that was success. The trunk went from early childhood, both elementaries and then middle school and then ended at the high school. So each week, the cultural trunk went to different schools. And December, like I said, we had a culture event that was a Nabo shoe game and that was just like turned out very good.
Yeah.
And then January, we have another cultural education that's going to be presented by indigenous artist from Lakota made. She's an entrepreneur from Manhito, she's going to be presenting in January, too. Other than that, upcoming for the committee, we're looking forward to the MIE conference at Mystic Lake, the second graduation feather ceremony. And hopefully we have like college field trips we can do with the Seminole twelfth grade Native American.
Chris.
We're still waiting for our, our aid application to be approved, but St. Peter qualifies for roughly twenty five thousand dollars. And a, a number of the items that Charmaine talked about will be funded through that grant or through that aid.
It's unfortunate that the, the process that the state uses for this, you don't, the applications don't go in until October. And if you have to make any changes, they let you know, say in November, end of November. And now here we are, December, and they haven't received the funding for this year yet. So you really can't move forward with anything because you don't have the funding. And you can't spend it before you get it, otherwise you don't, yeah, they, then they, you don't get it. So unfortunately, it ends up, and it seems like every year, you don't get this approval till after Christmas break. So you've got the second half of the year where you're spending all the money. And if you don't spend it by the end of the year, you don't get to carry it over. So you end up with this blank spot where you don't have the funding. So I'd love to work with the state like Dr. Harstad and say, let's, let's get that approval in the spring so that we can start in the fall right away and spread it over the year instead of doing all the spending in one half of the year.
And I would like to say that given that fact, the fact that Charmaine, under your guidance, there has been a lot of energy and a lot of positive interaction throughout the entire district and the community with, with the group with very little expense, except you guys do all the great cooking. So it's been wonderful what you've done.
Thank you. That's great. Anything else? Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, off to reports, the building principles. If you just leave your muted laptops on the table before you touch the board. Appreciate that.
It was the weather radar popped up. The weather radar popped up, and then it was an advertisement.
Trying to make sure mine wasn't going off when I came up here. Went off before I came up here.
The chair is kind of. The good news is the radar right now is clear. That is, okay, good to know.
The bad news is it takes you two and a half hours to drive from St. Peter.
So, Dorina's, she's out tonight. We had Rocko Paludi's funeral today, and so she's there with her staff. So that is where she is tonight. But in early childhood, we're focused on winter themes, of course, with being in the middle of December here. We've been having parents come into classrooms to do some activities this week, so that's been fun. They were scheduled a couple for last week, and now they've moved. So it's been great to have people back in the building now, since we've kind of put a hold on that for the last year and a half or so. We do still have openings in our three and four-year-old classes in preschool, and I just want to put that out there again, because after the first of the year here, we're gonna be advertising that and hitting that hard. We've had some folks move out of the community into other places, and so we've lost some students, which we're sad about, but we do have some openings. So we want to encourage families to get signed up for preschool if they have some interest. And then, of course, we always have our early childhood screening. That's a regular occurring three times a year, and so we're working on getting ready for that, which will be in early February. Mr. Orde?
Very good. Thank you. Wow.
So you're for you're focused on winter activities?
And the radar.
We're focused on winter break. Kind of, but it's good, right? It's good for the break. I have just greetings from North. I have some kind of some things from last meeting I wanted to share, like how things went. I know last meeting, we talked about like the North Close Closet that happens every year, which was really well attended the other year. Our student council members noticed that it was pretty much like a sprint to boots, the snow boots during that North Close Closet. So our student council put together a boot drive and got eighty pairs of lightly used or new boots, which was pretty awesome. So families can stop in and pick those up there right inside the front door at North, and those are gonna go like help the door pretty quickly, especially with all the snow flying. And also something our, probably again, who's one of our interventionists and our social worker. That was my, I bet. Can you believe I used to be tech? So anyway, Kelly Higgins, one of our interventionists, and our social workers have been working on a project here for a couple of years called the Giving Tree, and it's named after the Shel Silverstein book. If you walk in door number one on the left-hand side of the Giving Tree, families can just grab items to purchase that our social workers know that families need. So if you're walking north right now, you'd see over like 200 items, like brand-new items, that our social workers have been calling families in need for, and then they can come into our conference room and literally shop, like like do seasonal shopping and get many, everything from toys to clothing to books. And it's all just donated items from our community. So I definitely want to thank our social workers, Mandy Kennedy, Dave Rebar, and interventionist Kelly Higgins, just been doing a great job organizing that. That was really cool to see like families stopping in today and going right to the conference room and just grabbing items that their family needs, and a lot of them take a moment to wrap them up. So really cool, really cool project. Some planning is underway for our fourth-grade kindness retreat. This is an annual event put on by Youth Frontiers that's organized by our fourth-grade team, and Ms. Kennedy helps organize that as well. And then it's fully funded by the Manhito Clinic Foundation, which is really nice. I mean, pretty much I've been able to own them every year for as long as I can remember. So we definitely thank them for funding that. That's always like really good timing. It happens in February of each year, and that's kind of a nice mid mid-year point to remember about kindness, being kind to each other, and the fourth graders do a great job with it. And then just had the so number three, a Saint Center. It's, I know, I think we pushed it out, but if we don't, like we gotta keep pushing that out because our students have really taken the lead on it. Lily Ger Semel, and then Gabe Figueroa anchored it for this third edition. It's 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 pretty professional. This English teacher was watching it back there. We got we got the Saint Center logo in the table, and there's usually an event by one of our pairs, Nick. Mr. Nick is just loved by the kids all over. He does a ninety-second second like activity bit with anything from the students' hockey games that are coming up to what the kindness crew is doing and stuff like that, with the with all the action on the playground is every day. There was also like a like a kind of a clothing show, like, hey, what's it look like to be prepared to go outside for your free time when it's, you know, five degrees outside and snowing that the fourth graders did? So it's just all things that apply to like PBIS and support, like what's it look like to be, you know, a fourth grade student? And then I get to sneak in there and usually do a book sale. They only give me one minute, though. Very stern, I'm not.
I'll have to get some pointers from them.
What's that?
I'll have to get some pointers from them.
I will try to stay to one minute. In alternative programs right now, I'll just talk about night school first. We just finished up our second session. We had twenty-six students enrolled, and twenty-one of those students completed a half a credit or more. And then there's a few students that will just continue on. We don't make students start over, they don't fail night school, they just continue on the next time. So our next session, registration for session three is from January 4th to 24th. And so we'll hopefully be able to catch anyone from quarter two that needs to finish up some credits, too. So I'm really proud of those students that finished. It's hard to do night school after a full day of school, so it's awesome to see so many succeed. Right now, at Rock Bend, we have a few openings. So we're working with our counselors at the high school so that we can have some smooth transitions for high school students that want to start at Rock Bend starting second semester. So that's happening. And at Asho Learning Academy, we're always having students kind of come and go. So especially at this time of the year, that is really a difficult transition for students coming into a residential setting. So really just trying to establish routines with those new students before they head into a long holiday break.
Out of order. Our veterans program. I know I already talked about that up here, but we are work, the high school is working with the American Legion, collecting enlistment photos to include in our program. Or alumni who are veterans or currently serving in the military. So now we're starting to collect pictures to include those of who kind of turn into sort of a yearbook sort of thing. And I had the great honor of going and speaking since I had that great idea. I got to attend a Monday night Legion meeting, which I was happy to do. Also in November, I I don't think we've had a board meeting since our musical. We have a Fall Musical Shred, which is a huge hit. A couple nights were were pretty darned close to sold out. Kids did a great job, and I want to thank the the theater department for all of their great work. I know most of you were able to attend, and it's pretty impressive. And then Bree Bergstrom is our new, she was new last year. Feels like she's been around for a long time. Just had our winter choir concert. I believe there were, gosh, those people were there, there were probably 200 kids on stage. So we we already had a large high school choir, but she's continuing to grow that, and they are currently fundraising for their New York trip this spring. I believe we have at least 150 people who are going on that trip. So she's not on the very Tarleton, but she's great.
I'm gonna go. That's.
That's a lot of planes.
I was gonna say, it's more than a plane full.
A lot of buses.
Is it always gonna be the nine twelve? Because didn't it used to always just be junior, senior?
Yeah, you know, maybe Hermanson had.
Yeah, he might have had something there.
She also included, she included nine twelve, which.
How many chaperones with those 150 kids?
There are like. Almost at least one of them.
She's gonna put all the adults on them, one bus?
Wait, they're going by bus? No.
Once they're there, they travel.
Oh, my goodness. That's like a lot of buses.
Yeah, right. Navigating. Piece of cake.
Convoy going to New York City.
It is a great trip, if it's anything like the one that went on in 2019. It's a really fun trip. They keep those kids going all along from early until late, so if they're worn out, play the other day.
I don't remember.
So are we.
I don't remember which year it was, but pre-pandemic, I was in New York for work and ended up catching up with them at the Met, and that was pretty fun.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
That's a great trip.
Lots of fun stuff happening at the middle school as well. The first week in December, our fine arts department wrapped up their winter concert series. Fifth grade general music, five grade, seven, eight grade choirs all performed out of the Performing Arts Center. Student council just wrapped up their second annual Hot Chocolate Fridays event. Every Friday in December, kids are greeted at the door with a cup of hot chocolate, and that student council members are delivering. Just a great way to start the day, and we only had just a handful of spills this year, which is a huge step up from last year. The Project for Teens visited our fifth grade health classes last week, and their message was all about courage and using individual superpowers to help students inside the school and outside of school. And lastly, believe it or not, we're starting to think about course registration. Our registration book is being looked at by all of our teachers right now. Ms. Dozy will start to visit classrooms to talk about the registration process early in January, and we have to have the whole registration process finished by February. Sort out staffing for next year.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grand Seth?
I guess that makes it fair.
It does. It's your turn, yes.
Well, I do, as Mr. Frappkin mentioned, I want to begin by sharing our condolences with family of Rocko Paladi. Several of us attended, well, a whole room full of St. Peter. We're at the services this evening, and it was, you know, very unexpected that he passed. And he's been with St. Peter Schools for a long time. He's gonna be sadly missed. I I also want to thank our crisis team, who has put a lot of time and effort this year into making sure that our students and staff are supported. We've had our our share of sadness this fall, with this being the third staff member to to pass away during the school year. So I just want to take a moment and recognize all of the the time and the effort and the care that they have put into planning our responses. And hopefully, we're done with that for the year. But I know that they are always the first ones to show up whenever needed. Okay, moving on to happier thoughts, I'd like to extend my thanks again to the music and arts department at all of our schools. It is the season for lots of events and concerts and displays, and they've certainly kept our schools hopping with activities. I know how much work they put into those events, and they're greatly appreciated by all who participate and all who attend, and there's been lots of full houses. Another note, we had talked about having promotional videos for the district. Those are completed now. I did share a link with all the board members for you to check those out. If there are any changes that need to be made, let me know. I think next week is our kind of our deadline for letting them know what changes would be made. They're looking pretty good. Those will be rolled out with our enrollment campaign. We heard about preparing for registration at the middle and high school. Kindergarten registration will be held in March. And so as we are rolling out our registration, we'll also be rolling out the videos. They'll be on our websites, we'll be using them on social media, we'll be doing some advertising with them. So they will, they'll be seen by a lot, and we'll be able to track that through our Google Analytics. And so we'll have to do some experimenting in the near future. Google kindergarten St. Peter and see if the ad pops up with our with our new video. That'll be pretty cool. Anyway, I'm sure everyone is very aware that there's only two days of school left this week. Break begins on Thursday, we come back on Tuesday, January 3rd. Notice I said Tuesday because the first is on a Sunday, so the holidays, the Mondays, we come back on Tuesday. Hope everyone has an enjoyable and safe break. I do want to mention that yet again, there's snow in the forecast in a major way. And so we will be up early and out on the streets checking out how safe it is. But Wednesday, right now, they're calling for five to 10 inches of snow here in St. Peter. And so we will, we we will see. It's supposed to be light, fluffy snow, though, so.
A little bit of wind, and it'll be fun.
Yeah, they're talking about 40, 50 mile an hour winds. I'm sure it won't be like a giant snow globe at all. But so maybe be listening on Wednesday morning. If you see me out driving around, just wave.
See you in the roundabout sideways?
Stay out of the roundabout.
I will say, the roundabout has become my true test because.
Doesn't lie.
So you guys know I drive a truck, but I don't put it in four-wheel drive when I'm out testing. And I went around that roundabout, and the the back end of the truck just kept going. So I was kind of in the middle of the roundabout. Not gonna lie, it was kind of fun. And then I went home and called off school.
All right, round the table, Mr. Potts. Tim?
Nope.
And one of them is a question, first off, as registered, I'm dealing with the middle school and high school in particular. Is that information given to the two, or how is that information given to the two private schools in town? Like if they have an eighth grader that theoretically would want to enroll in ninth grade?
Mr. Graff?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the first part. How is the registration information shared?
Yeah, so like, yeah, if there is, especially for the, I mean, obviously, certain schools only go till eighth grade, and so they need a place to go for ninth grade. Certain schools are really good about sharing information about registration, and I was wondering if as a public school, if we shared that information with those kids? Because that is a group of kids that.
I'm I'm seeing.
We do.
Principal Engelding are nodding over there. I believe our counselors visit some of them and share that information.
Just a thought.
I think perhaps not every school was open to having them come.
Oh, that might be a thing. Okay, well, there you go. Okay, the other thing is, is if you guys ever want some entertainment, go up to the high school at about 8:25. Because I was up there for a meeting, yeah, and Mr. Clark does a great, they don't do bells, but it's a whole thing. I mean, and it it's kind of funny, like the announcements and some historical facts about things and a lot of music, and it's rather entertaining, so. And then the other is just a positive, positive experience I'm encountered with our school resource officers and a great things happening, and I think we need to remember that in being that bridge between the school and the community, and just is a very good program for us to have. a very good program for us to have, so that's what I got, and Merry Christmas.
I have nothing, thank you.
Very good, Mr. Cal.
Um, I sent out the delegate assembly resolutions, so if you have any questions about that, feel free to get in touch with me. Also, if you would like to see the MSBA legislative platform, get a copy of that, I can email you if you want. Then I do have a question. The organizational meeting is at at six or six thirty?
Six.
Six o'clock, because the city council meeting is uh the same night at seven o'clock, and so we need to be out of here by six forty-five.
So we need to correct this right here.
Start at six.
Noted. So the organizational meeting is just going to be on a night by itself, right?
Correct. And then we have another meeting on the.
It's the Thursday.
Yeah.
Nineteenth.
Well, how about I just go through all of them coming up here?
Why don't you?
We'll get that straightened right up. We have the business committee meeting on January ninth, five PM, right here in the governor's room. The organizational meeting that same night, Monday the ninth, six PM, right here. We have an education committee meeting Tuesday, the tenth, at six thirty in the district office. Uh, and then we do have our MSBA leadership conference coming up, that's Thursday and Friday, January twelfth and thirteenth, um, up in Minneapolis, and all of our accommodations and all those details are all set, so we're, we're good. Uh, policy committee meeting Wednesday, January eighteenth at four PM in the district office, and finally, the January board meeting is scheduled for nine, the nineteenth of January, right here, six thirty PM in the governor's room. Any other items or updates? Oh, I'm sorry, Chair Leonard, um, do you have anything?
Thank you for chairing the meeting, I appreciate it. I did not anticipate a two and a half hour commute home, I didn't know it was selling, but um.
So the roads are pretty good then?
It's not, the metro traffic is not good.
It's light fluffy snow. Fifteen mile an hour average.
I was doing under that, so.
Yikes.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you, meeting adjourned.